I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. May be a short one unless Randy's got stuff. He's kind of phoned her there, so I'm not sure. It always makes me nervous. Put this in my pocket while I got hold of it. I'll lose it before I get home, so. Thanks for getting that. Appreciate it. All righty. We have minutes to approve?
I make a motion. We approve the minutes for February 6, 2023, and March 6, 2023.
I'll second that.
All in fair say? Don't be shoving your papers at me. Expect me to sign without knowing what I'm signing. That's true. Yeah.
I haven't talked to anybody. I've just now thought about the fact that it's spring break, so. Sounds like they go to Florida.
Yep, they do.
But I couldn't remember when he told me he was coming back, and so I said I didn't have a message for him.
All right. I'm having a hard time seeing if I know what's going on. If I go blind, I can't drive home. Somebody take me. Payroll an amount of $204,605.94. That's kind of a small one.
Is that about normal?
No, it's just a little over normal, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's a little over. Is it 84 or 94 cents?
Yeah, it's usually.
Because the printout shows 84, but our sheet says 94.
Oh, my sheet says 94.
So it's 84?
Yes, 84.
I make a motion. We approve payroll in the amount of $204,605.84.
I'll second that.
I had a motion to second, but I don't think we.
All in fair say?
Aye.
Yeah, I guess, remember, I think on that, probably more typically closer to $150,000.
Yeah, so $150,000, usually about what it costs.
Last pay was $200 something.
Yeah, so I'm thinking too, but yeah, I think it'd be usually $150 or so per year. 20th today or 19th? 20?
20.
20. That would be our first day of spring.
I think it's today at 5:24.
Because I thought it always starts the 21st.
Nope, hour and a half away. All right, then we need to acknowledge received payroll claims accounts payable report, amount of $150,855.54.
I make a motion. I acknowledge the received payroll claims in the amount of $150,855.54. I'll second that.
All in fair say? Okay, then we have some out-of-cycle checks.
There's three of them.
Okay. We have one at the sheriff's office for $1,400. And one over $907.13 to.
Yes.
Past year collection center?
It's something that we bought for the town of Rockville, and they're going to reimburse us, but if we pay it early, we got a discount. That's why they want it early.
And then we got Gibson Tel for $24,211.83.
That's to give the grant going.
Okay. Yeah, that's the, actually coming from the ARPA funds. It's just I'm just paying early for the year. What, we agreed to pay them on their?
Do you mind these?
Internet? No.
No.
Is there a motion to approve that?
Yeah, I make a motion. We approve the out-of-cycle checks as presented by the author. Second.
All in fair say?
Aye.
Next up, we have a list of 2023 events here. I have not heard back from Greg about the use of restrooms and how they work that out. Remember, he brought that up last time by using restrooms, and it's just going to be a matter of them getting an agreement with us, a certificate of insurance as always, and then they'll be responsible for cleaning up, taking care of those. I didn't think we had to have an official agreement on paper tissue, and he can work that with Don, and Don would just let them know when he needs supplies and what he thought had been used, and they could just supply those. It's kind of hard to commit somebody to a firm amount. You don't really know how much you're going to be using those. So here's a list of 2023 events that they are wanting approval for, so I have to make a motion that we approve the list of events as presented by Main Street.
And I'll second that.
All in fair say aye?
Aye.
All right, then we have a traveler's claim, so that's with insurance.
Those, these just arrived in the mail today.
Okay. Just letting us know what's going on here. Somebody had a Rockville windshield.
No.
Well, then we got the sheriff's office. We'll get to that in a minute then.
These, this is what we talked about last month.
Yes.
And the acknowledged thing that you need to sign in the invoice was not the same. Took me forever because on here is a girl to contact. She no longer works there, but she still has a voicemail.
That's just strange. What was her name?
Heather somebody.
Oh, yeah.
Suzie helped me find, get the email for the.
Dana sent you an email, right?
Keller.
Ryan Keller, yeah.
And they got in touch with me, and the invoice was wrong.
Okay, good.
So now here is the corrected one.
So what we have here is correct?
Yes.
Now we added numbers last time and tried to make it work out.
Well, I figured out what numbers made that, but I did, they, she said they just didn't include it.
Yes, $19,888.67.
So we already have the check wrote, so we voided it and are going to reissue.
Okay.
For the correct amount.
So is there a motion to approve the invoice?
Yeah, I make a motion. We approve the invoice from Thrive for the matching money. I'll second that.
All in fair say? Okay, I'll sign it.
They even went to their website, and it wasn't any good anymore.
Yeah, they're going to do big changes there. He's doing a great job running around his. All right, and then.
This, the other one we talked about, and Nick helped me fill it out, is for.
The lost wages?
Yeah.
Yes.
And Nick said that there's a place that needed to be signed on here. I asked him, should Roy sign it? Should Jim sign it? Should I sign it? Or should you sign it? And he said you should sign it. It needs to be notarized. I will take it to Cassie and swear that you signed it.
Yeah, we got a record anyway. We got video. We had a problem with that, so. All right. And this said it was the 20th day of March of 2023.
That's the other one that needs to be notarized, so you don't need to sign it.
Oh, I don't need to sign it? Okay. All righty.
I need the copy too.
Okay. Can you sign on that?
Nope. That's my cheat sheet.
Gotcha. All right. Departmental things. We have this letter here from Jason Frazier, just about to, what we have. Our current inmate count 63. We have 50 county inmates, three DOC, and 10 other county holds. I went out and met with them the other day to look at that siding, siding issue still. It is a mess. I mean, that, that's going to be an expensive thing.
You do need to sign that paper.
I thought it looked like it did.
I hadn't looked at it closely yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you guys get a chance, you'll probably go out and look at it. It's just, it's got mold. It's got the, what do you call this siding?
Like the.
Like the concrete smeared on it?
Drive it, yeah, or stucco.
Stucco, stucco. And it's just coming off, and seed and hocks coming off, and it's bubbled up, and there's places where you got the cracks going down. So you guys got water in. They've got water and some mold in one of their offices. We have to be very careful with that because for me, kind of thing, I got in trouble with mold, and it shut down for a while to get mitigated, so. If you guys get a chance, watch around and see. I do have a guy that is doing work for me, and he just did a building in Indianapolis with the metal siding, like we wanted to put on that. I don't know if it's somebody we want to consider. If you remember, Matt couldn't find anybody, even bid on it.
He never got any bids.
No. So I'll take this guy and look at it. It may be bigger than he wants to get with it. I mean, it's a big jail. It's going to be a big job, but if you're okay with me taking him to look at it and see what he thinks.
Does he have a couple of buildings once he has?
And I think, yeah, he has some regular ones, but then he can get more if he needs them as he goes, so he'll hire a crew. But he may not be interested. Maybe bigger than what he wants to do. He does just construction homes and renovations and those kind of things, but he did in Indianapolis. I can show you a picture of it. And it's kind of what we're, what we're looking at doing. Let me find him here real quick. That's what he was doing. And I think maybe even, we were talking about covering the, covering what they already had and putting metal on the outside. I don't know if that would work. Let me show you the other part here. I must have put that on Facebook. I mean, the look, the job looks good, but again, it's just a big, big job.
Did they ever determine what is behind it?
That's what he did there. Yeah, it's a.
Is it just concrete block?
Uh, no, it's not even that. Some places it is. Some places it's just a metal cage that they set down there. But it's a fiber board kind of a thing. It's not even cement board. It's just a.
No, I mean, what's behind it?
Yeah, behind the stucco? Yeah, that, that.
No, I mean behind that, because you have to have something to.
Someplace, that's why it's coming off. At some places, it's just a metal cage that they somehow fastened, whatever they had to use to fasten these boards on. And some of it's concrete block, and so I don't know. The Jager's one took Jason Mira and showed him where all the spots were, and it's a mess. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if that's what we're looking at, I mean, he did that, so I don't know why he couldn't do, do the other two, unless it's just too big for him, but I'll bring that up. All right, Randy. While he's getting settled here, I went and drove 800 today. We had the gentleman before come to 800, and I had a message from another gentleman. I think there's somebody coming next meeting to talk about 800, and Randy had just been on that a week and a week and a half ago, and he said it was rough, but there were no holes, but there's holes now, and a lot of holes now, and that took a picture to show Randy. Oh, I mean, big and deeper than my hat. I threw my hat in some picture I took, so it's just that, it's spring. It's what they do. And Randy's got the crews working, but of course, they're out every day, and they're on Catlin Road now, working that direction, but it may be a while. And unless he goes back and looks and makes determination that that road is worse than the ones they're working on and have to jump over, then it's just going to take time to get there, and, but it is, it's tough, but they could go south to 900. Wouldn't have to drive there very far. There's another road every mile or mile and quarter. But 900 is rough too. It's got some big holes that they're getting ready to work on first before they come there, so it's just something Randy's going to have to, have to pull the trigger on one way or the other. Either stay and see the course he's on or move stuff around, and he's been trying to keep the four patches we have in the four parts of the county, but that may not be able to hold up either. We have some urgent need that we have to go get some urgent air taken care of, so.
Well, you got 900. Like you said, it's rough. 1,000 is excellent. It's in perfect shape. You can go on south again with county line. You've got four of them there. It's all about five miles long.
Yep.
And two of them are in excellent shape, and two of them are.
Yeah.
But they're only about a mile apart. You have 800, 900, 1,000 on county line.
Yep.
So.
And that mile, I mean, that five miles, if you were going to repave 800 at some point, that's a four years community crossings. That's what you get, the whole year, right there.
Close to six.
Yeah.
Five point nine something, I believe it was. All the way to 800. That's getting bad too.
Yep. All right, what you got?
I mean, all the way to Coxville.
I knew what you meant, yeah. It's not so bad from 350 to Coxville. I mean, it's got some holes, but it's not too bad, but from the highway, once you get on top of the hill, top of the hill to 350, maybe even a mile to the side of 350, it's not too bad. West of 350, but once you get about a mile, it's just really, it's bad. Intersections are bad.
Stones were, I remember it started getting really bad when I was down there.
Just because it came to my mind before you go on, did you get a chance to go look at what Chris Kelly was talking about, about Mill Road, about that, that stone that's in the ditch that he dumped?
No, I haven't, yeah.
Okay, he called the other day and asked, he said, whatever's washing out there is washing out more and getting worse, so he just wanted to know if you were aware of it. And I said, yeah, I'd let you know, so if you get a chance to look at that again.
Yeah, the grade all's down now, so.
Yeah, okay.
I might get some sort of idea. We'll know if I have the parts or not for it, so.
I asked him the other day, the grade all of a sudden, we need to consider leasing instead of owning our own. You weren't sure that you'd lease them?
I don't know. I don't know if they do or not. I've never heard of anyone leasing. I haven't neither. I don't know. You can lease them, own them, but you're just paying.
Right.
Payments.
Yeah, right.
They call the lease.
Yeah. Okay.
Just a loan, really.
What you got?
They don't look at the bids for the, this year's, or the last year's, I'll be the 23 days, no, 22 days too, I think it is. About 22 days too.
I was asked by an employee of Siri Solution the other day, but my impression, the Siri Solution didn't bid this year on stuff. Did they? Did they?
They did, they did higher.
Was it? Okay, okay.
County Road 200 North committed $143,348. 275 North committed $117,905.40. And 1200 North, a little high, committed $85,115.70. I mean, the total of 346, 369.10. That's a little cheaper than what the estimate was, and I did bring the estimate. Somebody must have called me and talked to me or something. I forgot it.
Was that the last round of community crossings money we're talking about?
Yeah.
So what do we do?
Not the one we just got turned in.
Right, right. So what do we do if the actual cost is less than what the estimate was? Can we split it on something else?
No.
Okay, I didn't think you could. Okay, okay.
We stole the money back. That's what we did.
Okay.
We owed them some back. I think we signed it last meeting.
Okay, good.
So that's all closed out now.
Okay, good.
Ready to move along with this one. We've got three copies of this. If you guys would sign all three of them. And if you wouldn't, give me the other. Yes, I've got two copies. I know. I think we signed that one. I hope we got a sticky one. And you'll need to test off of them. See, she don't? Yeah, she does.
There's no place.
You can just sign below or signature that.
Sign below whatever.
You just write a test on there and make your own line.
Keep one up if you want to. So she needs keep one out? She can keep one. There you go, man. I'm curious. Brought you the annual operation report last meeting. You guys had a chance to look it over. Want to sign one?
Yep.
Yep. Do you have any questions on it?
Nope. Are you fully staffed?
No, not quite.
What are you missing?
I think we're still missing three.
Truck drivers?
Well.
CDOs?
Which is a one. Not the other one, CDO.
Probably ought to have a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept the annual operation report provided by the Highway Department.
I'll second that.
All in fair say?
Aye. We'll get you a copy of that.
Okay.
And I have an out-of-cycle check. Mr. US Aggregates for Stone, they've sent us emails, but on the old address.
Ah, gotcha.
So we finally got that straightened out. We got it. It's amount of $33,969.84. Okay, well, we're. You go ahead.
I'll make a motion. We approve the out-of-cycle check from the Highway Department to US Aggregates for $33,969.84.
I'll second that.
All in fair say?
Think you have to sign that. You want to decide it?
I'll sign it. I'll get back to the office and give it to Pay and Pay.
Anything else?
American Water Works, going to have Miller Pipeline replace the water line from Wall Bank Street there in Mecca, all the way up Mecca Road to Fortin Lawn. But they are going to put it down the middle of the road, or in the road some places. Generally from, I think mainly from about the junkyard. There was unloaded equipment over there. Up to the, about the top of the hill, it looked like, on the plan. I have the plan if you guys want to look at it. Then they're going to be off to the edge of the road, and then one, either one place, they're going to cross the road, and they're going to direction aboard that. And he said it because they're going to direction aboard that under the road too.
Good.
I don't know unless they're going to dig off the edge of the road and shoot it in. Or they're setting up down there. It looks to me like they're, they have to go past the junkyard to turn the unloaded right close there. They could probably start off the road right there in that curb off the road and get well past the junkyard and come out about there where French houses back into that driveway. So they could go under the road there, probably without a lot of trouble, other than structures or some old sewage or drainage, not sewage structures under there. There'll be 60 inches, 60 inches deep for this one. It'll be a pretty good depth. Yeah, that's a plus for us. Yep, I'll go ahead and sign the permit then. I wanted to ask you guys about that first. But if they do have to cut part of the road and dig that, you know, I guess just oversee it and make sure it goes back like it should.
And do we put it back and build in for it, or how's that work?
No, they ought to do it.
They do it, okay.
That's what says in the permit.
Okay. So once we had to change subjects a few years ago, we had a discussion about cutting the road. A couple of farmers wanted to cut, cut a road. Have those been maintained like they should? Have they taken care of those like they promised they would?
Yeah.
Good, okay. I was confident they would, seeing who it was, but just wanted to make sure they had, so.
Yeah, then the other one was down on 100 South, too, I believe, west of 350 west.
Okay.
Name was sold on that one, and he took that out.
Good, good.
We did get our big pipe put in on 900 South. We had to go a week later, but we got it done. Had to leave it closed over one weekend. Face it, I Tuesday.
Okay.
Which I wanted to get it done, not keep it closed over a weekend, but good workouts.
As long as you're here, we have a request from Billy Creek. Is he here? That's you, Cat? The request was that we done to pass to close, close that road for the three days, for three days?
There should be.
May 5th, 6th, and 7th?
There should be an ordinance on the books from years ago that they're, it's okay to do that.
Yeah. We'd have no clue what that ordinance was, and we can pass a new one or just approve it, but is there anything you need to do as far as?
No, no, thanks.
Publicizing any closures or anything?
Just let the sheriff department know.
Okay, okay. So didn't want to steal your thunder, but since he was here, we're going to ask about that, and it's something we've done in the past. We've even done it for Bridge Festival in the past, so.
There used to be gates up there. I don't think the gates are there anymore.
Yeah.
The gates are down the hill in the ravine.
We can go down and get them.
Well, yeah, I'm not going to go, but my group will go. It's down there, you know? But we're, we're hoping to either use those gates or do something that allows the Amish buggies to go through still, something that's easily movable for them, so that they can kind of still use that road to keep themselves safe.
Get off the highway, yeah.
Yeah, but we're expecting.
Do you expect to close it right there on the Billy Creek side of the road, so that people can still come off of, off of the highway and go up the hill? Will they have access to do that, go back into town?
Yes.
Okay, because you're going to close on the other side, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to keep it.
So that shouldn't be a problem at all, so.
Thank you. We're expecting quite a bit of foot traffic, and we're actually going to have quite a bit of Calgary there, so we'll have horses on site, and so minimizing car traffic, I think.
Did you ever see Civil War days? You may be too young to ever see as a kid, but it would have been 20 years ago. It was huge then, so I hope you get back in that stage then. It was, it was a huge thing.
It has grown exponentially faster than myself, and Eli Grimes is my reenactor coordinator, and he used to do it with his father as a kid.
Good.
As a reenactor, so he's kind of stepped up to be that side of it.
It fell apart because the leaders of the groups couldn't, couldn't agree on who they. It fell apart because the leaders of the groups couldn't, couldn't agree on who the generals were going to be. He was going to be playing general this week and so that's, that's when it fell apart.
At one point, wasn't it the biggest reenactment in the Midwest?
It was the biggest, yes, it was huge.
Yeah, they used to park up Nysland all the way to Kinnon, full size of road.
We would have bands come out for eighteen twelve overture. And they would have live cannon fire on cue for the eighteen twelve overture. And that was, I was on the board in those days. It was just a great time to be out there. It was really big, big stuff.
It's, it's coming along very quickly. We're, I've already confirmed a General Lee impersonator to be giving speeches each day. We're going to have at least one, if not two battles per day. I'm working on getting a Gatling gun demonstration out there for both days. And I know that I've got...
I'm guessing cannon too, cannon, cannon?
I've got at least twelve cannons confirmed.
People love cannons.
Well, when I started organizing, Greg basically said, I want big booms. So that's in my whole, whole drive behind this. But we have almost a hundred reenactors are already pre-registered to come. Many more are interested and like our Facebook group has like one point, like eleven hundred people interested in coming.
It'd be, it, it'd grow if, if it goes well. And of course, you're still depending on weather, but that's always part of it too. But, but people love that kind of stuff. The reenactors love the opportunities to do those kinds of things. So if it goes well and, and they can all get along, then it'll be all right.
So far, everybody's getting along.
Good.
We've got a Weaver demonstrator coming. She's bringing her sheep along. We've got a couple of market tiles and settlers. We're going to have...
Blacksmith shop?
A blacksmith. He's going to be bringing like a field blacksmith shop. He's got like a full field setup. We've got...
Another one we had that was great, people came out just to see that too, is we had a medical display one day.
We're working on it. We're, we're still trying to convince the gentlemen to come on.
Draw the tools out and have the chat and it was just, it was awesome to see how that was, how it worked.
And then we have a confirmed pastor for Sunday morning. They're going to hold church in the Baptist church on Sunday morning.
Nice.
But we're, that's why we adjusted our hours. We're going to actually have public hours starting at eight AM so that public can join the church service at Baptist church if they would like.
Sounds good. Anything from us that we can help, let us know.
Well, did, thank you, yeah, just the, the gates was the main thing.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve of Billy Creek closing the gates at May fifth, sixth, and seventh for Civil War days.
I'll second that.
All in fair say.
Aye.
See, didn't have to come at all. I can just take care of it, it's no problem.
Oh, another note. Have you been out at Millstrom Bridge lately?
Where?
Millstrom Bridge.
Melcher?
Melcher.
Melcher, yeah.
No, I haven't.
Okay, I got a call there today. Somebody said that moved the barricades and people have been driving through.
Well, I did, a couple of weeks ago, put more up. I don't know if they...
Maybe it better off, we're going to rip wrap at each end of it.
Yeah.
Any progress on the engineers on that?
Yeah, I did call Joe. He left a message saying they had them and he's going to get ahold of it again.
Okay. A lot of people anxious to get that back and, back and going. It's not an easy way around most of that. Okay?
Pretty good deter for...
It is a good deter, yeah.
If you're going to Montezuma on this side.
Yeah.
If that's all I have, if you guys have anything else for me?
No. Did you have a presentation for us or you're just here to observe or?
No, I was going to talk to you guys just about a couple of additional things.
Sure. Hang on just a second and have you come up here if you were.
Okay.
Let's get Randy out.
You too, Randy.
Thanks, Randy. Let me know what, if you look at eight hundred and, and where you are, let me know if you're going to...
Yeah, I'll try to go down the barn.
Change your schedule, let me know so I can let them know at least what the plans are. Thanks. But, but we're not, but we're not even suggesting to you what you ought to do. That's entirely up to you. If you guys stay where you are, that's what you do.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
It's got holes right everywhere.
And if you move and go to eight hundred, then the people you left are going to be mad because you're not doing their road, so you know.
So one of the things that Hamilton Center also does is help with residential and state hospital placements, both for adults and for kiddos. Hamilton Center has four group homes. We have three in Terre Haute. One is all male, one is all female, and one is a co-ed. And they all hold ten beds. We also have one at Post Road in Indianapolis, which is also co-ed, so that's our fourth one. Those are SGL or supervised group living. So we have staff on twenty-four hours a day. Our program's...
My staff, is that just one person overseeing?
No, so usually we have a supervisor and then we have up to eight mental health techs that work. Yep, so we try to have two on each shift for safety. We have some crossover, so like mid-shift, three to like, let's say eleven. Some in between, that way you've got some additional support for that day shift or that evening shift or from the evening shift and the night shift. So we have eight staff. They operate twenty-four hours a day. So we are really proud of those group homes. And so any adults that we're seeing that need some additional support, that maybe aren't doing as well in the community as we would hope so. Their mental health symptoms are severe, they're impeding their independent living. Then we can put an internal referral in to our group homes as adults, as long as they're eighteen years and older. And then they would go, if our beds are full, they would go onto a waiting list until we have bed availability. If we...
Where are they while they're waiting on the waiting list?
So unfortunately, they're still out in the community at home. Now, what we try to do is provide additional independent living skills in the community. So we try to wrap those services around. So we try to make sure that they're seeing that therapist, seeing the care manager, you know, coming in for their medication, those kinds of additional support options. That way, by the time they get to the group home, that they've had services wrapped around.
Are there times that the group home just doesn't work out for an individual and you have to take them out? Is that a...
So you know what? We have on occasion had that. Usually if that occurs, it's for a state hospital placement.
Got you, okay.
And so what we do is what we have is called a gatekeeper. That gatekeeper, we work with our inpatient unit, we work with our supervised group living. And then we all three determine, hey, this guy has been in acute stays multiple times. Independent living didn't work for him. Supervised group living is not working for him. We need to now look at state hospital. So then a referral will go into state hospital. We'll do that process and then when state hospital has a bed, they'll be transported there.
Is there one state hospital now?
No, so we've got IndyI out of Indy. There is still Richmond and Evansville are the three that we use most frequently. I believe there is, I believe there is Logan's Port.
Used to be, but...
Yeah, so it's more forensic bed. So like if somebody is arrested and then found not competent to stand trial, then they may be placed on a forensic bed at Logan's Port, so. We also have that process for kiddos. Now, we do not have supervised group living or acute placement for kiddos. But if we have kiddos that are just really struggling...
What kind of age, age bracket?
So any age, usually six or older. Then we can work towards like a residential placement. We've got a list of residential placements that we can help parents apply for. And then worst case scenario, of course, is a state hospital placement for a kiddo. Now, placements for kiddos are much shorter usually. So they range from three to six months. Our goal for any kiddo that we're placing outside of the home is to get them home very quickly. Because we know treatment works best at home with family.
What if I've got a child that's just uncontrollable issues? What do I do with them? Do I bring them, do you and tell you what my problem is? And then do you take them out of the home and place them someplace? How's that work?
So if we have a kiddo that is just, let's say, in crisis, right? You would bring them to that, to us. We would assess them. We could look at an acute placement if hospitalization is determined. What we have run into here lately is that some of our acute placements are saying they are too acute. We're, we're not equipped to handle the acuity that they're showing. And that's when we need to start looking at some longer-term placements. So residential potentially, if residential placements start telling us no, then we start looking at state hospital. But in the meantime, what we're doing again is wrapping services around. So we're utilizing a wraparound. Wraparound is a referral put in through the state or through two-one-one. They send a child advocate out to get the process started. And then Hamilton Center has wraparound providers who work with the care managers. And then we wrap around those services, both at school, at home, with the family. We're working on medication, we're working on therapy, and we're trying to work through all of those things at once. We're also doing referrals for BEADS, so through Area Seven or FSSA, which not a lot of people have heard of BEADS. So that is Behavioral and Developmental Disability Services. And we apply through, again, FSSA. And we put that application in. The application process can take a little bit of time, but FSSA will send the family a, a list of all the items that they're needed. So an IEP from school, if they need IQ testing, if they need therapy notes, anything like that. FSSA will request on behalf of the parents. Parents will send that in.
At what age do they cease being the child and go to an adult at eighteen?
Eighteen is, yep, eighteen is typically that crossover. Now, we will have some kiddos at age eighteen that are still in school. So if they're still in high school, then they're still considered underage and a minor. Our goal is when they hit eighteen, if they are out of school, then they become an adult, so, yep.
What if you take in an adult and their child together?
So we don't usually offer, and now we'll offer outpatient services. So like if I have a kiddo, if you were, let's say, had a son and you brought your son in. What we may do is put a care manager with your son. We may also have a care manager for you. Maybe they're working parenting skills for you. Maybe they're working coping skills with your son. Maybe you're doing individual therapy both apart. And then maybe you're doing family therapy together. Then maybe you're seeing a medication provider as well. So our goal is to wrap the services around the family.
I know it's a impossible question, but if that were the case?
Mm-hmm.
What typically timeframe would you expect for things to get more manageable at home? A year, couple of years?
So, yeah. You know, we like to see improvements. And again, we measure improvements very differently than what most organizations, you know, measure improvements. We're not testing kiddos, we're not. Someday, we may have significant improvements. Sometimes we might have some regressions in the midst, you know? But our goal is every goal that we set for a kiddo, for an adult that comes to us, their goal is set for a year. We want to make some progress within that year towards an overall goal that they have, usually towards bettering their life in some way.
And how does this get paid for?
So usually through Medicaid.
Okay.
Medicaid is usually our payer, our first payer. Now, we have some clients that have private insurance. Usually those clients that have private insurance are doing individual therapy. If they're determined to, let's say, they want case management or skills, then we can look at that as we do a, basically a charity case. And we submit that paperwork in. We also have grants that Stacy and I have applied for specifically for our office. We've got right now some grants that will pay for people coming in to get substance use treatment that have private insurance that may not cover like group therapy. So those grants will pay for that for them. We are trying, you know, we are not going to turn anybody away that needs services, that wants services. That's definitely not...
I suppose you get some people in the trap where they make too much money via Medicaid, but they can't afford the treatment either and they don't have insurance. So what do you do in that case? Seek for the grants to help with that?
We do, we look for grants. We also look at a couple of different programs through the state. Depending on diagnosis of the client, we can look at medical frailty. Depending on certain diagnosis will qualify through Medicaid and we can say, hey, look, here are the symptoms this consumer experiences. This is the diagnosis. We're applying for medical frailty. And they will actually get an MRO package or a Medicaid rehabilitation package to get them the services that they need through Medicaid, yeah.
Is mental health a determining criteria for SSI? Can they get special social security ever for that?
So...
Is it a disability, I guess is what I'm asking?
I, I would like to say yes.
Because you've not seen it.
I, SSI, SSD, it's usually a struggle and it usually takes a process. We absolutely help our consumers apply. And we always tell them, please expect that on your first go-around, your first application, that you are going to get denied, yep.
Sorry to have so many questions, but veterans, is the Veteran Administration helping veterans with these disabilities?
So the Veteran Administration does help, or at least they should be. We off, we also have a Veterans Program primarily through our main center. And then we help with the veterans where we can and, and what, you know? If, if they're going to the Veterans Administration or if they're going to the Veterans Hospital, most likely they're not coming to see us. Because the veterans will kind of say, hey, you're getting treatment here, you don't need to go outside. Now, some people, some of our veterans will choose to come to Hamilton Center. Hey, I, I chose to come here instead of going there. And what we try to do in that case is get a release of information. That way, we can coordinate and collaborate with the Veterans Hospital that they are going to. That way, we can work on treatment together.
I know, we're all aware of the suicide rates with veterans. Is there any outreach program to reach them? Anything going through our Veterans Department, Veteran Service Officer to reach veterans of that kind of...
So like I said, we have our Veterans Program. Steven and I'd have to, he's brand new. I'll have to get his last name for you. I know that he's doing a lot of outreach to our veterans right now. I know that there's some other programs that are being looked at and, and reaching out.
They're thinking outreach to our Veteran Service Officer. It'd be great for him to know what was available to them too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So many times, that's so tough to detect. But one veteran may see something in another veteran, but they wouldn't know who to go to with that.
Exactly. So, and that's why, like I said, we have, Steven is his first name. I'll have to, I'll have to look at his last name.
I think you can come in sometime with you, that'd be great. I like to know how that works, because that's such a serious problem.
Yep, they are. And we are actually doing a lot more training with our staff for veterans specifically. So like we take a military competency class when you're hired on. That way, we have that. We also have a tier one and tier two that are care managers, our program managers like myself. We go through and we get trained. And then there's a STAR Behavioral Health. We are part of that program for mental health for veterans, which also means that almost all of our therapists have been trained, again, in the STAR Behavioral Health Program for veterans, all the way through tier one through tier four.
We have a very, at least what I hear, the reports I get, very effective and helpful Veteran Service Officer, Stan Rukes. So he would be the contact person to see what...
Yeah.
Just so he would know what things were available for him to do.
Absolutely. Yeah, I would love to get his number. If you have that, would you mind?
It'd be in the courthouse.
Perfect.
I wouldn't have a number up on the first floor.
That's fine, I can stop in there and get it.
Stan Rukes is his name, R-U-K-E-S.
Okay.
Sorry to have all the questions, but this...
No, that's what we're here for. That's why I come.
Such an important part. And we just see more and more effects of it all the time, you know? It's just difficult times for a lot of people and so.
It is. We're seeing the acuity go up. I know Valley Professionals is seeing like acuity go up. We're just seeing that kind of across the board. I think some of it has to do with COVID, you know, coming on the other side of COVID, being isolated. I think some of it is just where we are in mental health right now. And so we're really trying to broaden our scope, get out there, help as many people as we can, educate as many people as we can about our services.
Well, I appreciate that. And I want, want you to keep educating us about the services. We get asked sometimes about this.
Absolutely, and that's what we're here for, so.
Yep, thanks.
Your turn.
I can tell you, before you, we were ignorant to anything that was going on that we were buying from Hamilton Center. So I really appreciate your effort, thanks.
Absolutely. And like I said, if there is anything specific that you would like covered, then I can absolutely do that as well. And let me get you Steven's last name and his contact information as well, because I think you guys would really appreciate that.
Or just ask him if he can come by for a meeting one time, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
He didn't have to do a big presentation, just like to see who he is and, and see if he's got contact with the Veterans Office and, and see what their relationship is. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anybody else have anything for public comment? So we found gizzard replacements yet? So, man. Give the second to adjourn, we're adjourned, thanks. Give the second to adjourn, we're adjourned, thanks.